Good afternoon, everybody. It is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Selectmen meeting. Just some housekeeping, just to let everyone know this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page and other social media. Does anyone have any issues with that? Okay, great. All right, so our first and most important business we have in this session here is I'd like to introduce all of the essay contest winners of third grade. And so I'm gonna actually have everyone start and just say your name, whether you're from Asonet or Free Town. We'll start off with you, Caitlin.
My name is Caitlin and I'm from Free Town.
My name is Jonah and I'm from Asonet.
My name is Riann and I'm from Asonet.
My name is Travis and I'm from Free Town.
My name is Kira and I'm from Free Town.
My name is Grayson and I'm from Free Town.
Awesome, thank you very much. So next, we're going to have the essay winners, if they'd like, you have option two, if you want to read your essay. Do you want to start here?
I am proud to live in Free Town because there are so many kind people here. Some of the kind people who help me every day are my teachers, family, the police, my principal, and the firefighters who live near my house. I always know that the police are looking out for me in school and keeping me safe. I also like that we have a Free Town forest. The forest helps us by giving us oxygen from the trees and a safe place to walk and explore nature. And it makes our town look prettier with all the plants and trees. We also have a lot of trees and flowers by my house. I like living in a small town because I feel like I know everybody and some of my best friends live near me. I feel very safe walking my dog around the neighborhood, riding my bike, and being outside because I know my neighbors are always looking out for me and my friends and family. And my neighborhood is full of friendly dogs. We have so many places we can go and get food, gas, and watermelon refreshes. And my favorite place to get steak is Profile Tavern. The only thing that is missing is me seeing the bear.
Gentlemen, who do you want to go next? I think she was speaking to us.
Why am I, why I am proud of my community? There are lots of reasons to love Free Town. The people, the history, all the sports make it fun, but I love Free Town because of all the nature in it. All the trees make it peaceful. Even in the winter after a crazy blizzard, when you go outside, you can see a scene from a movie. In the summer, you can roll down the windows and it makes you feel refreshed. Free Town's nature gives us a calm and happy feeling. There's nothing better than to have a clean and happy town to live in and able to make good friends and memories.
I am proud of my community for so many reasons. First of all, many families come together to support each other in sporting events, such as soccer and football. Everyone cheers and screams for the kids. Second, secondly, we have a beautiful and gorgeous church. I made my first communion there. Then I have a nice playground near a river, and you could feed the duck if you bring bread, and you could play on the playground, laugh. The schools in my community are the best because the staff are really nice. For all reasons, for all these reasons, my community makes me proud.
I am proud of my community because it is a small town with a lot of great people. I like that our community has lots of trees. The community takes pride in keeping it clean. Our community tries to keep all the animals safe. I am proud of our baseball fields and we are lucky to have Little Fenway. I'm proud that everyone in town goes to our festivals like Lakeside Festival and the Strawberry Festival. I'm also proud of our Fourth of July parade and all the people who show up. I wish this was on the east Free Town side of town where I live. These are the reasons why I'm proud of my community and why I love Free Town.
I'm proud of my community because people are kind and they work together. I love my school because the staff members are good influencers to be safe, respectful, and responsible. Free Town has a lot of landmarks that make it unique. I have lived here since I was one year old, and my mom and papa have lived here for around 44 years. I grew up here and that makes this town important to me. That is why I'm proud of my community.
Hi, I am Grayson Robert. I have lived in Free Town all of my life and I've realized this is one of the best places to be. I will tell you a couple of reasons why I love my town. One of the biggest reasons I love Free Town is because it is a small town that is slow and quiet. I like that because I can go outside and breathe the fresh air, not be able to hear the sounds of beeps of cars, unlike a big city like Boston. Another reason I love Free Town is it has the Profile Tavern Restaurant. I love their big ravioli. Free Town is a great place to live because of the people. They are so nice. Every time I see my neighbor walking her dog, she says hi with a nice and calm voice. I have another neighbor who is nice enough to give us veggies from his garden. In Free Town, everyone would like to be kind and respectful, and that is what I get from my neighbors and friends. A cool fact about Free Town is it has a town hall that is very old. We could almost call it a historical site. Another cool fact about Free Town is it has one of the, it is one of the oldest Free Towns in the US. Free Town has its own natural resources like Profile, Rockville Ledge, and Long Pond with its own beach. I have a cool fact and a reason Free Town is cool is the police dog, K9 Coda. That is interesting that in a small town like this one, we would have a police dog. The school is another reason Free Town is nice. The reason I like the school is because there are so many events, such as the Fox Festival and the amazing teachers and principal. One more reason I love Free Town is the sports system. It is cool that the town can make the sports system for kids that want to play a sport that they like. Those are the reasons I love Free Town, and you will too.
Well, that was great. Thank you, everyone, very much. I just want to say a couple of words, you know, reading these essays reminded me why, you know, why I do this, and I'm sure the other selectmen can relate. You know, we do have a beautiful town with a lot of natural resources, and it's important that we, you know, do everything we can to protect those. And I think that really came through in all your essays. And also, I just want to note that, you know, it takes a lot of courage to get up here and read your essay, so, you know, we're very proud of you, and it was a really awesome thing you guys did today. So why don't you give yourself a round of applause? All right, great. So now, I'm gonna go through the rest of this top agenda, right?
They're gonna be selectmen for the night, so they can help you.
Okay, so now, this is, this is very important, so you guys are gonna help us vote on some items, okay? So, you know, we'll do an example, right? And then you can follow along and, you know, we'll help you through it, so don't worry. Got it? Okay. All right, so next is our agenda item three is whether, so whether to vote to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 6:12, 2023. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 6:12, 2023.
I'm gonna make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'm gonna second the motion.
Now, when I say all in favor, I'll say aye. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's good example one.
You guys are pros, right?
All right, so we have a couple more, much more important ones that will be later on in the agenda. But moving on, so we want to speak to about the Tuesday Club and congratulate them on the successful Strawberry Festival. And I have some stats from the Strawberry Festival. So there's 300 pounds of strawberries. There's 64 quarts of heavy cream. There was 130 pans of homemade shortbread, which equals that 1,125 servings. That's a lot of shortbread. There was 500 hot do, is that hot dogs? I think so. And unfortunately, I was not be able to make it, but I don't know, Deb just want to speak to some of the other, I know you were able to swing by.
Yeah, I went to the Strawberry Festival, it was wonderful. Strawberry cheesecake was amazing, tasted great, and was nice, there was a lot of vendors. I thought it was well done. It was a nice afternoon to go out, and they, I will say, they did an amazing job with the vendors, and they did an amazing job cleaning up because you wouldn't know that there was quite a few people that went through there on Sunday afternoon. So they, all in all, it was, it was an absolute success, and it was really nice. So I would thank the Tuesday Club for putting that on as they do every year. It's really nice for our town as one of the, one of the contest winners here, the essay winners alluded to, our town is special because of some of those community events that we're able to host and have, so that was one of them.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Deb. So this next agenda item is to see if we want to close a couple of town buildings for the Fourth of July and, you know, give some town employees a day off, all right? Do you guys think, you know, I'll have some discussion on that. Does everyone think that everyone should get a day off for Fourth of July?
What do you think?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Stay home for July.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right, so.
I don't know.
Should I, I mean, should I get a day off? What do you think? No? All right, so I'm gonna entertain a motion that we close the town hall, the library, the council on aging, highway department, and transfer station for the Fourth of July holiday.
You want to help me make that motion?
Say motion.
Motion made.
Say second. Ready? One, two, three. Second.
So I think I have a motion and I have a second. All right, all in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Great job, guys.
Well.
I've had a teacher to, you know, much older people, I mean, someone had to teach it to me when I was 34 years old, so I still struggle with it. All right, this is a fun one. So now, we're gonna vote whether to approve the hawkers and peddlers' license for the Third of July fireworks in Free Town for Nico's novelty. So this is the license that, you know, the folks need so they can send, sell all the kind of streamers and all the fun stuff down to the Fourth of July parade. Any discussion on this? You guys think we should allow, you know, some toys to be sold down to the Fourth of July parade?
I think so.
You think so?
Okay.
Anyone have a favorite toy that they're looking forward to getting? You can tell your parents right now.
Now's a good time. Run with the crowd.
We'll get it on film. All right? Okay, so with that, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the hawkers and peddlers' license for the Third of July fireworks in Free Town for Nico's novelty.
You guys help me say motion made. Ready? One, two, three, second. Motion made.
All right.
All right, team, ready?
Do I have a second?
I do.
Three, one, two, three.
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys are getting this.
That's right.
All right. So now, this next agenda item is to give exclusive access to Hathaway Park for the Fourth of July parade and fireworks for Third, for, sorry, for July 3rd and 4th. So this means that we got to make sure that, you know, nobody else is using that park at that time so that we can have the fireworks. Does that make sense? Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, I think that's a good idea. We don't want to have too many events going on at the same time, and that'd be a mess. All right, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to grant exclusive access to Hathaway Park for the Fourth of July parade for fireworks on July 3rd and 4th, 2023.
Just wanna say it with me. Motion made?
Second.
I think, he's a natural politician down there.
Is that what I was supposed to?
Perfect it was. We were on tight ship down this end.
All right.
Good job.
All right, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect job.
Hey, hold this, I'll be right back.
So our next agenda item here is, we have to vote whether or not we're gonna close the roads so that we can have the parade, right? Because you have to make sure that, you know, it's safe for everybody, and we can't have cars driving around the same time as we have a parade, right? That'd be, cause all kinds of problems. So with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to close Narrow's Road, South Main Street, and Water Street for the Fourth of July parade on July 4th, 2023, or a rain date if needed. Let's hope there's no rain date needed. Do I have a motion?
Right. Motion made?
Second.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. All right, so I think that takes care of this part of our agenda. So next, we're going to go into recess, and I think we have some, we'll sign first. All right, sorry, now. So we have certificates for each of our selectmen of the day. So Luann's gonna bring those down. So I'm gonna, I have to sign them, right? I already signed these, I think. Okay, perfect, so.
They have to sign this.
Okay, so we're gonna start off. I'm gonna sign it too. So I'm gonna sign this here, and then Caitlin, you're gonna sign your name right above where it says your name right there.
Sounds pretty cool. You guys got to sign it. This would become part of time.
Yeah. I would finish this.
I've been in the books.
Okay.
You guys have part of history.
Great job. Just find your name, sign above it, and then pass it down.
Blue pen two.
Awesome.
Blue pen two. Make sure it's.
And no one told me when I got this job that I spend most of the time just signing documents. It's a big part of the job.
I love the signature. She writes her name with a heart. Love it.
So we should, first, first, first card, first couple, and then.
Yeah.
Time flies here.
So every third grader has better penmanship than me so far.
Oh, it's continuous, she's doing great.
You can see mine, mine looks like a scurple at this point.
Good job. I can't bear that. So, and we're also gonna have, so we're gonna do a personnel board, a couple of agenda items, then we're gonna have time for pictures and, and then we'll, you know, recess, we'll take pictures, and then we'll come back into open session after that. So this is gonna be yours, all right?
You wanna read it, Caitlin? You wanna read that? You want me to read it?
Oh, look at this, she's in great order.
Sure, I'm gonna read this.
Okay, yeah, please.
So this is a certificate from the town of Free Town. It's a certificate of appointment to Caitlin Sessin, and it says, "We, the select persons of the town of Free Town, by virtue of the authority and as vested by the laws of the Commonwealth, do hereby appoint you as selectman for the night, June 20th, 2023, given that Free Town Mass this 20th day of June." Town of Free Town Board of Selectmen, and it's signed by all of them. And look at the official seal, isn't that cool? That's for you. That's hanging material right there. Next, selectman for the night, you wanna read his certificate?
Are they all?
They all say the same thing, but they all separate.
Yeah, I mean, I go. So I'm gonna now kick it over to Selectmen Loops for Personnel for agenda item nine through 13.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel Board, item agenda number nine, discussion involve whether to approve the fiscal year '24 appointment list, which is attachment A. So this attachment is quite long, so we'll leave it as an attachment. This just carries over the people that are on our boards and committees for the entire town. Any questions, concerns, or discussive discussion? All right. I entertain the motion to approve the fiscal year '24 appointment list, attachment A.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye with me, too. All right. Item agenda number 10, discussion involve whether to approve the fiscal year '24 pay rate increase of 2% for lockup attendants Lisa Podolski and Lydia St. Laurent effective 7/1/2023. What do you guys think?
That I did?
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 pay rate increase of 2% for lockup attendants Lisa Podolski and Lydia St. Laurent effective 7/1/2023.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there we go.
You guys are doing awesome. Item agenda number 11, discussion involve whether to approve the board registrar pay rate for fiscal year '24 at $15 an hour. What do you guys think?
$15 an hour seemed pretty good, everybody?
Pretty good. Minimum wage for the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah.
That I did? All right. I entertain the motion to approve the board registrar pay rate for fiscal year '24 at $15 an hour.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You guys, look at this. Item agenda 12, discussion involve whether to approve the gatekeeper pay rate to be $15 an hour effective 5/26/2023. What do you guys think? Make sense? Yeah. Anybody else?
I think we're good.
I entertain a motion to approve the gatekeeper pay rate to be $15 an hour effective 5/26/2023.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Item agenda 13, thank selectmen for night winners for assisting in the meeting. But I think we all know, you guys did a great job today across the board. Congratulations, everybody. Great essay. You guys did amazing.
All right, so I will, we're now gonna go into recess, take some pictures, have some snacks, and then we're gonna come back in at 7:00 PM to finish up business. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into recess until 7:00 PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we are now back from recess, back into open session, and I'm going to kick it over to Selectmen Loops for some, for Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, item agenda 14, discussion involve whether to approve the appointment of Deborah El Petti as town administrator effective 7/1/2023 through 6/30/2024. Any concerns, discussions, though?
Nope. Congratulations, Debbie. Exactly. Congrats.
I like to, I entertain the motion to appoint Deborah El Petti as town administrator effective 7/1/2023 through 6/30/2024.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congrats, Deb.
Thank you.
All right. Item agenda number 15, acknowledge and congratulate the retirements of the following individuals. A, Elton E. Ashley III effective 8/1/2023. B, Steven E. Abbott effective 7/2/2023. And Carlton E. Abbott Jr. effective 7/1/2023. Chief, kick it off to you.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight on this special occasion. We have three sergeant promotions, and those were created by upcoming retirements. One of the people that are retiring is Sergeant Elton Ashley, and I'd like to call Elton to come forward, please. Stand and bear with me for a second, please. So Elton came to us from the fire department side, and then in 1988, he began as an auxiliary officer, in 1990, a part-time police officer, in 95, a patrolman, in 2003, he began serving as an acting sergeant, in 2004, a sergeant, in 2015, he served for about a year as an acting lieutenant. He was the department's first EMT, and his assignments have included firearm instructor, department armorer. He developed the firearm safety program where residents could receive training to earn their firearm licenses, and he previously served as a cruiser fleet maintenance officer. He has an associate's degree, and he's, he's had a number of commendations. I'm not gonna list them all, but some of them included apprehending dangerous breaking and entering suspects. He was heavily involved in the community service project for the Veterans Park, which is across the station, and remarkably, while on duty, he delivered a baby girl. So congratulations to Elton, and I have with me tonight is retirement ID. It's a younger photo that I stole from. And your retirement badge. So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Can't leave just yet, Sergeant.
All right, first of all, congrats.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and that baby girl's right around the corner.
Little. So we're here today to present Sergeant Ashley with a certificate of appreciation from the Board of Selectmen, and it reads as follows. "We, the selectmen of the town of Free Town, here recognize your 35 years of service to the town of Free Town, and as employers such as yourself that truly make Free Town an amazing place to work and live." Thank you, Sergeant Ashley. Thank you, sir.
So next, I would like the, the following patrolmen to come forward. Caitlin Jones, Nicholas Drinkwine, and Thomas Long, please, if you could stand center. Congrats, congrats. All right, we're gonna start out with Caitlin. So Caitlin Jones has been in service for about six years. She started in 2017 as an auxiliary police officer, and she took the initiative to self-sponsor to the police academy, and when she finished the academy, we hired her as a patrolman. Her assignments have included sexual assault investigator, she's a liaison with the Domestic Violence Center, and she serves as a field training officer. She has a bachelor's degree, and tonight, she's gonna be pinned by her grandmother, who I'll, I'll call in a second. Her grandma is Sue Jones, and from 1975 through 1998, Sue served as a reserve police officer. She was the first female officer in our department. And unfortunately, back in 1975, police work was a heavily dominated male culture. However, if anybody harbored any concern about a woman performing police work, Sue Jones removed all doubt. She was a consummate professional, professional, and I had the honor of working with her. So you got a great pedigree there, Caitlin. Next to Caitlin is Nicholas Drinkwine. He's been serving for seven years. He was brought on in 2015 as an auxiliary police officer, 2016 promoted to reserve police officer, and in 2018, he began serving as a patrolman. Prior to all of this, he worked from 2005 to 2015 at the Bristol County Sheriff's Department, where he served as a sergeant in a special investigations unit. He's currently assigned as the department's accident reconstruction officer, and he holds a bachelor's degree. He's gonna be pinned tonight by his dad, Joseph Drinkwine. And last but not least, we have Thomas Long with 10 years of service. He started out in 2013 as an auxiliary. He was promoted to a part-time reserve officer in 2014, and as a patrolman in 2016. His assignments have included K-9 officer and a member of the Semlek SWAT team, and he was recently assigned as a department firearm instructor and an armorer. He has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. When I was looking through his personnel folder tonight, I saw a remarkable entry. In 2017, he and Patrolman Lee had demonstrated great restraint in not firing at an armed suspect. This suspect was armed with two handguns and had discharged those handguns. So he brings a great deal of bravery to the department as well. So at this time, I would like those that are gonna do the pinning to step forward. So as I said, Caitlin's being pinned by her grandma, Sue Jones. Nick is being pinned by his dad, Joseph, and Tom Long is being pinned by his fiancee, Julia Robert.
It's when they wore the boo-boo vest.
So at this time, I would like to call our town clerk forward to administer an oath of office. Cheryl?
Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you, Thomas D. Long, Nicholas J. Drinkwine, and Caitlin A. Jones solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as police sergeants for the Town of Freetown, according to the best of your abilities and understanding, in good faith, so help you God? If we're going to continue the oath, then just repeat after me. Keep your right hands. Aye, and then state your name. Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the Town of Freetown. I promise to impart my professional standards of quality and integrity, so that my conduct shall be above reproach and merit public confidence in the position of police sergeant of the Town of Freetown. I promise to always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I promise to put service before self. Personal courage whenever called upon. And you are committed to duty and the rights of others. I promise to never betray my badge, my character, or the public's trust. I promise to serve with integrity, honor, loyalty, and excellence. At all times. I promise to serve and protect the Town of Freetown and its citizens. Aye, and then state your name. Promise to keep this oath today, tomorrow, and always. And hereby accept the position of police sergeant for the Town of Freetown. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, your new sergeants. You may be seated.
Congrats, sir. Congrats.
So we have a lieutenant's vacancy that's coming up. And the incumbent Lieutenant Stephen Abbott couldn't be here tonight. Uh, his daughter's getting married Friday, and I think they had the rehearsal supper tonight. Uh, but Lieutenant Abbott had served for 38 years. He started in 1985 as an auxiliary, and then was promoted to reserve police officer. In 1988, he was promoted to patrolman. In 1999, he served as a sergeant, and 2011 as a lieutenant. He'd been a longtime firearms, firearm instructor, TASER instructor. Uh, he was the auxiliary program liaison, uh, evidence officer, firearm licensing officer, scheduling officer. Uh, he held an associate's, bachelor, and master's degree. And, uh, his, his experience and skill will be sorely missed. Now, having said that, I'd like to call up our next lieutenant, Benjamin Levesque. Tonight Benjamin, tonight Benjamin is going to be, uh, pinned by his son Andrew. But let me say a few words, uh, about Ben. Ben began in 1998 as an auxiliary police officer. In 2000, he was promoted to a reserve officer. In 2004, a patrolman. In 2011, an acting sergeant, and also in 2011, a sergeant. His assignments have included detective and school resource officer. He currently serves as the department's quartermaster and is responsible for cruiser fleet maintenance, and he is the field training officer supervisor. He has an associate's degree, and is currently working on his bachelor's degree. He's received commendations, uh, for fine work done during investigations, capturing breaking and entering suspects, capturing a rape suspect, capturing an armed and dangerous suspect. And he brings a lot of common sense with him, as well as the experience. So at this time, I'd like to call Andrew up, please. No pressure there, Andrew. And I believe the town clerk is coming forward.
Do you, Benjamin Levesque, solemnly swear and affirm to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as police lieutenant of the Town of Freetown, according to the best of your abilities and understanding, in good faith, so help you God?
I do.
Repeat after me. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Benjamin Levesque.
Promise to uphold
Promise to uphold.
the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
and the bylaws of the Town of Freetown.
And the bylaws of the Town of Freetown.
I promise to impart
I promise to impart.
my professional standards
my professional standards.
of quality and integrity
of quality and integrity.
so that my conduct
so that my conduct.
shall be above reproach
shall be above reproach.
and merit public confidence
and merit public confidence.
in the position of police lieutenant
in the position of police lieutenant.
of the Town of Freetown.
of the Town of Freetown.
I promise to
I promise to.
always have the courage
always have the courage.
to hold myself and others
to hold myself and others.
accountable for our actions.
accountable for our actions.
I promise
I promise.
to put service before self
to put service before self.
personal courage whenever called upon
personal courage whenever called upon.
and I am committed
and I am committed.
to duty and the rights of others.
to duty and the rights of others.
I promise
I promise.
to never betray my badge
to never betray my badge.
my character
my character.
or the public's trust.
or the public's trust.
I promise
I promise.
to serve with
to serve with.
integrity
integrity.
honor
honor.
loyalty
loyalty.
and excellence at all times.
and excellence at all times.
I promise
I promise.
to serve and protect
to serve and protect.
the Town of Freetown and its citizens.
the Town of Freetown and its citizens.
Aye, and then state your name again.
Aye, Benjamin Levesque.
Promise to keep this oath
promise to keep this oath.
today, tomorrow, and always.
today, tomorrow, and always.
and hereby accept
and hereby accept.
the position of police lieutenant
the position of police lieutenant.
for the Town of Freetown.
for the Town of Freetown.
congratulations.
So I'd like to present this flag to you. It was, uh, raised and lowered today, and it'll commemorate the day you were appointed. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So at this time, I would like to call Scott Rose up. Sergeant Scott Rose. So tonight, Scott's going to be pinned by his wife, Sarah. Scott, uh, served in the United States Army from 1988 through 1991, and then from '91 to '96 in the Army National Guard. He was a full-time police officer in the Town of Berkeley in 1992, before we stole him away. Uh, in 1997, he began here as a reserve officer. In 1998, he started as a patrolman. He was assigned to assist in detective duties at various times. In 2006, he was an acting sergeant. And in 2007, he was promoted to sergeant. He holds an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree. With respect to accreditation, Scott was assigned as the department's accreditation manager, where he's done a great job. Uh, he's, accreditation incorporates the best practices in law enforcement through our policies and procedures. And he's earned a reg, uh, a, a reputation amongst accreditation managers as one of the best. Uh, earlier tonight, I was looking through his personnel records, and there were a number of commendations for meritorious service, including capturing armed suspects. But what's, what stood out to me was his community service through the years. He, he was involved in such things as coordinating elementary school visits. He developed a student internship program with local colleges. He'd assist the Tuesday Club with the Strawberry Festival. He met with various organizations and organizers of the Robinson Estates Yard Sale, which attracted hundreds of visitors each year. He was involved in a bicycle safety program for children. He was a recipient of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award for preventing injuries and encouraging safe driving programs. Uh, he received that distinction on two occasions. And he served as a DARE officer, where he interacted with hundreds of children. And more recently, he's been assisting with the Parade and Fireworks Committee, coordinating their events. It's this dedication to community service that will serve the department well. So I'd like to congratulate you on a job well done, Scott. At this time, I'm going to ask the town clerk to come forward and administer the oath.
Could you raise your right hand for me, please? Do you, Scott M. Rose, solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as police chief for the Town of Freetown, according to the best of your abilities and understanding, in good faith, so help you God?
I do.
Please repeat after me.
Aye.
And then state your name.
I, Scott M. Rose.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
and the bylaws of the Town of Freetown.
and the bylaws of the Town of Freetown.
I promise to impart
I promise to impart.
my professional standards
my professional standards.
of quality and integrity
of quality and integrity.
so that the conduct
so that the conduct
of the affairs of my office
of the affairs of my office.
shall be above reproach
shall be above reproach.
and merit public confidence
and merit public confidence.
in the position
in the position.
of police chief of the Town of Freetown.
as a police chief of the Town of Freetown.
I promise
I promise.
to always have the courage
to always have the courage.
to hold myself and others
to hold myself and others.
accountable for our actions.
accountable for our actions.
I promise
I promise.
to put service before self.
to put service before self.
personal courage whenever called upon
personal courage whenever called upon.
and I am committed to duty
I am committed to duty.
and to the rights of others.
and to the rights of others.
I promise
I promise.
to never betray my badge
to never betray my badge.
my character
my character.
or the public's trust.
or the public trust.
I promise
I promise.
to serve with
to serve with.
integrity
integrity.
honor
honor.
loyalty
loyalty.
and excellence
and excellence.
at all times.
at all times.
I promise
I promise.
to serve and protect
to serve and protect.
the Town of Freetown and its citizens.
the Town of Freetown and its citizens.
Aye, and then repeat your name.
Aye, Scott M. Rose.
Promise to keep this oath
promise to keep this oath.
today
today.
tomorrow
tomorrow.
and always.
and always.
and hereby accept
and hereby accept.
the position of
the position of
chief of police for the Town of Freetown.
chief of police for the Town of Freetown.
congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So at this time, I'd like to call Sarah up to do the pinning. I didn't forget you.
Uh, everyone, thank you for being here today. Um, I was asked to say a few words about, um, Chief Abbott. And I like to be a little bit more personal tonight by saying Carlton. It's something I'm not accustomed to because I've always called him chief or boss. But I think tonight I can be a little bit more personal. So if you can imagine, as Chief, uh, excuse me, Carlton prepares for his retirement, uh, just to, to identify his years of service here for the community, approximately 40 years dedicated here to the Town of Freetown. He started back in 1997 as a, an auxiliary for the department. He had an opportunity to go to the full-time academy and graduated in 1993. We, where he graduated the top of, uh, his class. Soon later, eventually gained the opportunity to become the chief of police in 1998, and has been serving since. 24 years of service. Almost made it to '25 if he made it to August, but still, 24 years is a good stretch. So we can all agree upon that. So during his time, he furthered his education by getting his associate's degree at Bristol Community College. He got his bachelor's degree at Stone Hill, later got his master's at Anna Maria College, and then got his law degree by attending the Southern New England School of Law. And all of that education has definitely benefited the Town of Freetown by his leadership, his dedication for the profession, and striving us forward with a professional department. And how he did that was in numerous ways. Um, by following the, you know, the guidelines of accreditation, we pushed forward with these professional standards set forth by MPAC. And it led us to the profession that we are serving the community today. He's created a promotional system for the ranks of patrolmen, sergeant, and lieutenant, which just only supports the need for well-educated and well-deserved officers to fit those positions. And if you can imagine, you look around today, his legacy is left with this building that you're in now. And you saw in over the design of this building and the promotion of the needs of the department with this building. We are very blessed, very grateful, and he was a great component of that. Not only did he contribute to the town internally, but he was a strong member outside of the department as well. He was a member of the Bristol County Chiefs of Police. He was also a member of the Mass Chiefs of Police. He was a member of SEMLAC. SEMLAC organization is no more than a regional pool of resources where we're able to use them throughout the, uh, the other agencies and community. And finally, um, he was the president of SEMPTA, Southeastern Mass Police Training, uh, Commission or Association. And, um, he led training, reserve, and part-time office for numerous years, as well as creating, uh, uh, an in-service program for the veterans officers, actually, you see here today. A strong impact of, of the community, a strong impact for the area, uh, cities and towns. He's been nothing more than, um, a great asset for everyone. But I can't say enough about him. Um, a great role model. Um, I've learned a lot from him, and hopefully I can take that forward as I sit in this role. So Chief, if I could have you up here, I'd like to take the time and present you with your retirement badge and your retirement ID, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you so much, Chief.
I had Doc here in this photo.
All right, Chief, one more thing, too. So we'd also like to present the certificate of appreciation to Chief Carlton Abbott. So we, the selectmen of the town of Freetown, hereby recognize your 24 years of dedicated service as a police chief to the town of Freetown. As employees such as yourself, that truly make Freetown an amazing place to live and work, the board is honored to present the certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much, Chief.
So I figured I'd say a few words, and I'm going to be true to that. It's a few. So thank you. I want to thank the boards and the department heads. I want to thank the men and women of the police and communications departments, including those that I worked with throughout my career. I want to thank the residents and business community for all of the support they've given. And of course, my wife and children for always supporting me. I'd like to acknowledge the chiefs that are here tonight. You've all been incredibly professional and collegial, and thank you very much. It means a lot to me. Why I love being chief? Well, the three reasons why I liked being chief, loved being chief, one was teamwork, the other was helping people, and the third was the officers. In 1979, I began as an auxiliary police officer. And prior to that, I had participated in a lot of team sports. And I saw police work as an opportunity to be part of a big team that had a great impact. And I can testify that that is absolutely the case. With respect to helping people, I mean, we give advice, we assist people during emergencies, we protect victims, we maintain public order, and we enforce the law. And sometimes, there are little things, such as getting a call on a Sunday to install an air conditioner in a window of a senior citizen's house. Or on another occasion, turning off a water valve for a busted water pipe in a senior's basement. Or trying to fix a short circuit on a refrigerator. Long story, smoke, but no fire. And finally, the officers. And I've had an opportunity to serve alongside an extraordinary group of men and women. So in closing, I'd like to say that I've been honored to serve as your police chief. Thank you.
All right, so that was a lot. That was moving. So we're actually just, we have to sign some documents here, and we're going to then close the meeting. But feel free to mingle and hang out for a little bit. Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. Congrats. Thank you, buddy. Check it out. See? We're just doing the same thing you were doing. Sign our names like a thousand times. After a while, your hands start to hurt.
Yo, thank you. You did a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you. You did a great job. That kid's going to be, he's going to be somebody someday. Yo, it's funny, when I was looking at this, going, did we vote on any of these?
They're always a little bit of a party.
Yeah, I know, I know. Start looking at all different things, you're like, hmm. All right. With that, signatures are done. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.